Good evening. This is Chairwoman Tierra Booker-Dwyer. I now call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for Tuesday, November 19, 2024. I invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag to be led by Ms. Chika Kalu. We will then have a moment of silence in recognition of those who have served education in Baltimore County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In order to efficiently conduct this meeting, all voting items will be done by roll-call vote. I want to start off by thanking the wonderful, wonderful students and chef Lisa Tomacek at Western School of Technology. The sophomore and junior culinary class made us a wonderful, wonderful Thanksgiving meal tonight. I mean, we had turkey, we had greens, we had sweet potatoes, we had apple cups and pumpkin cups. It was absolutely phenomenal. We definitely have some future Michelin-star chefs coming from Baltimore County Public Schools, and so thank you so much. Let's have a round of applause for the wonderful students at Western School of Technology. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the November 19th Agenda. Dr. Rogers, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
I am unaware of any additions or changes to this evening's agenda.
Hearing none, the agenda stands as presented. Earlier this evening, the Board met in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act for the following reasons: to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The closed-session summary and the open-session information summary can be found on Board Docs under this Board meeting Agenda date. The next item is a Special Order of Business on the Recognition of Student Artwork. Every year, the Board of Education publishes the annual comprehensive financial report, and each year, student artwork is included in the publication. Later this evening, after the ACFR, we will -- after the ACFR, will be presented to the Board, and we would like to recognize those students whose artwork is included. Each selected student receives a gift card. For the presentation of the names of those students, I now call on Mr. Hartlove.
Thank you, Board members. And it's very, you know, exciting for us. We have a paper copy of our annual financial -- annual comprehensive financial report, as well as it's online, and the artwork in here. The numbers are boring, but the artwork is beautiful. And so I'll read off the names of the artists that are in the book, and I encourage everyone to look at the book, but also to look at the art, because it is very nice. Paisley Mulligan is a fifth grader at Chase Elementary School. We'd like to recognize her. Ima Koo is a fourth grader at Honeycomb Elementary School. Megan Kronowski is a fourth grader at Seven Oaks Elementary School. Morgan Weston is a third grader at Seven Oaks Elementary School, and Noah Warner is in grade two at Hillcrest Elementary School. So I'd like to congratulate them all, and they all get a gift certificate -- a gift card from us.
We have talented students here in Baltimore County Public Schools. The next item is a Special Order of Business on the Recognition of BCPS by the American Heart Association. Joining us for this presentation from the American Heart Association is Kate Poole, Tracy Brazelton, and Jennifer Tar. And if I mispronounced any of your name, please correct me.
You get an A for pronunciation.
That's not often.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman Booker-Dwyer, Superintendent Dr.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Rogers, and members of the Board.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr.
Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate the remarkable commitment and achievement
Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
of Baltimore County Public Schools in advancing health and hope for everyone everywhere through
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frempong?
Yes.
Ms. Lecter?
your participation in Kids' Heart Challenge.
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Baltimore County Public Schools was ranked number 10 in the nation and number one in
Yes, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Personnel Matters, and for that, I call on Mr.
our eastern states region. With your participation, again, in Kids' Heart Challenge, among your achievements,
The next item on the agenda is Personnel Matters, and for that, I call on Mr.
you raised a remarkable $319,062 to help kids, families, and our community live longer,
McCall.
Good evening, Chair Ms. Booker-Dwyer, Vice Chair Ms. Pumphrey, Dr. Rogers, and members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
healthier lives.
McCall.
Good evening, Chair Booker-Dwyer, Vice Chair Pumphrey, Superintendent Dr.
It is my pleasure to honor and recognize your achievement and present you with this award.
As we continue through this school year, I need to go back to my original message from
Rogers, and members of the Board. I'd like the Board's consent for the following Personnel Matters: terminations, retirements,
way back in 2019, when I started my role as president.
So we invite all who participated.
resignations, leaves, deceased recognition of service, and certificated appointments.
If you'd like to come forward for a photograph, that we'll be happy to publish on our social
At that time, I spoke repeatedly about workload and the need for the retention of our educators.
media.
Yes, Dr. Rogers will accept the award. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Matters as presented in Exhibits F1 through
These are topics that continue to concern me still five years later.
Perfect. Thank you.
F6?
With the needs of our students, academic, social, emotional, mental health, and more,
So moved, Frempong.
Do I have a second?
we need to be sure, as always, that every task we are asking of our educators is a
Second, Lecter.
Any discussion? May I have a roll-call vote?
task that will benefit our students.
Ms. Stalaski?
Yes.
Dr.
As for retention, we appreciate and value the three-year contract that we all worked
Savoy?
so hard together to attain. Dr. Rogers has shared at her budget meetings, and it is important that our educators know what to expect over the next few years with regard to their compensation. And speaking of the budget, we know that the message from Governor Moore is that our five-year state budget protection is not a good one. And while government leaders continue to say things such as "everything is on the table" to address the concerns, we know that means education too. But it is certainly not the only thing that costs our government money, so we need to all keep that in mind as well. And we know how important a world-class education is and how we must, as I've said before, keep the focus on the needs in the classroom. The human resources must be in place to develop the relationships that are the foundation of student success. We've heard that the numbers that the majority of the BCPS budget goes to salary and compensation packages for its some 20,000 employees, approximately 9,000 of which are the educators I represent. And while there still is an educator shortage, we must do all we can to recruit and retain those educators. Compensation is certainly part of that, but so are working conditions. As budgets are being developed, let's be sure we are looking at the needs of our students and how we must do all we can to be sure that they have the educators and the education they need to be successful. As always, TABCO stands at the ready to support and assist this work and in the discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is from nonprofit community groups. We have Eliseo Magos from the Maryland League of Conservation Voters. And please correct me if I mispronounced your name.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the Board. My name is Eliseo Magos Gonzalez. I'm a community organizer with CHISPA Maryland, a program of the Maryland League of Conservation Voters. We work with families of color to ensure they have -- they are a powerful voice in protecting our air, land, water, public health, and communities. We are currently working on a campaign called Clean Buses, Healthy Kids. I hope many of you have heard about or even support this campaign. Today, I'm joined by mothers of students from Baltimore County who are concerned about the air their children breathe. We know that diesel school buses emit dangerous pollutants that kids breathe into their developing lungs. These pollutants are cause respiratory illness and aggravate asthma. These mothers also know the air that their children are professionally treated by buses that pollute after all. Maryland school districts serve more than 88,000 children, and 62% of them are non-white students, and nearly one intends to suffer from asthma. Clean electric school buses will mean less pollution and less school absences from children. So that's why I'm here today, to encourage you to take advantage of all funding opportunities available to transition pollution diesel school buses to zero-emission electric school buses. The Maryland Department of Environment and the Maryland Energy Administration recently opened their electric school buses program, and the EPA has just announced another round of funding for electric school buses. These funded opportunities will provide the school district with additional resources specifically for cleaner and healthier transportation for our children. Our kids deserve a healthy environment where they can breathe clean air. Transitioning diesel school buses to electric ones will be a huge step toward protecting the health of students in our communities in more sustainable Baltimore County and Maryland. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have our individual citizens or students, and our first individual citizen or student is Mr. Rodney Houston. Mr. Houston? Okay, we'll come back to Mr. Houston. Our next individual is Ms. Sharon Saroff. And we'll come back to Ms. Saroff. Our next individual is Dr. Farone.
Good evening. I really apologize for my attire. I just could not help it. I can't tell you how many times I'm really mesmerized, inspired by Jensen Huang, the CEO of Nvidia. And I really can't help it. Hopefully, you agree with me. When I listen to that man, that professional, I remember the school system. Of course, I have been here for more than 25 years, and I appreciate your work, every Board of Education, but I don't see really a serious, serious progress. I see maintenance of effort, contracts, policies. Compare that with private companies like Nvidia. Nvidia started some 20 years ago or something like that, unknown, for 15 years. He was the CEO for 30 years, that's half of his age. And he relied on teamwork, communication, communication, taking care of his people, collaboration together, and accountability, all right? So 15 years of nonproductive work, and then all of a sudden, they discovered that famous GPU chip that made the company what it is. So what I'm trying to hint to is, and maybe the rocket going up in space today is also inspiration and really reminded me with you, public schools are like Army and Navy and police, all right? You know, has amended, and I know about the law. But I think it is important for you as a Board to consider teaming up with private companies. Consider learning from companies like Nvidia and why they became so successful. Because at the end of the day, I personally think that the school system gets itself involved a lot with politics and religion behind the scene, and that has no business really in the success of the school system. Your product is only student education. Nvidia basically succeeded because they care nothing about politics, religion. It doesn't matter who is hired, regardless of their faith, color, religion, national origin. What counts is the product. Your product is the students, not everybody else. If you focus on the student and...
Our next speaker is Lucia Isles. And please correct me if I did not pronounce your name right.
My name is Juliana, and this testament is inspired by Lucia Isles. I am a volunteer with CHISPA Maryland, and most importantly, I am considered -- I am a concerned mother of a Baltimore County student in 10th grade. I care very much about my daughter's health and I -- and her performance in school. That's why I am here today to urge you to do all that you can to make sure that Baltimore County moves from diesel school buses to clean electric school buses. Did you know that diesel school buses emit dangerous pollutants that create asthma and other problems? And did you know that diesel pollution has also been linked to lower test scores and worse academic performance? And in fact, a child riding in a diesel school bus may be exposed to 15 times the level of toxic diesel exhaust as someone riding in a car from black and Latino children who are mostly likely to have asthma than their white peers riding in diesel school buses is especially harmful. So that's why I'm here today, to encourage you to take advantage of all founding opportunities available. The Maryland Department of Environmental -- Environment and the Maryland Energy Administration recently opened their electric school buses programs, and the EPA has just announced another round of founding for electric school buses. Please take advantage of all these founding opportunities and commit to transition your fleet of school buses to clean electric buses on behalf of Baltimore County children. Thank you for all your time this evening.
Thank you. Yep, thanks. Yes, we always love it when our students come and share. So I'll go back to Mr. Rodney Houston. Ms. Sharon Saroff.
Good evening. I hope everybody is doing well. My reason for being late today was because I was on the phone with a parent of a student who has been told that her child isn't reading at the fifth grade, but she's making sufficient progress on her IEP. What's wrong with this picture? As a parent, I can say that I unfortunately heard that from my own child, who is now 27. And the only reason that my child is learning is because I made sure that they had the services that they need. That's not happening right now. When you're telling a parent that sufficient progress is at 20%, when you're telling a parent that their fifth-grade child is making sufficient progress when they're still reading on the first grade or below level, that's a problem. On top of that, we're not willing to give students occupational therapy when they need it. Oh, they're functional. They can't write their name, but that's functional. You don't have enough speech and language therapists so that kids can get the services that they need. I'm hearing parents on a daily basis complaining about how much service their child is missing because you don't have the personnel to give them these services that they require. It is not okay for you to be passing a fifth grader to a middle school who can't read at the first-grade level, and this is not a single student. You've got plenty of them in the school system. We have to stop lowering the bar. We have to start giving them the services that they need. And I'm going to give a shout-out and a kudos to Rod McMillian, because he attended Decoding Dyslexia's meeting last week, and he heard what's going on, and he was very upset about it. So I wish that everybody on your Board would be like him, because he's getting involved. So kudos and thank you.
Thank you. And one last time, Mr. Rodney Houston. Okay, the next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session, and for that, I call on Ms. Devasti Jones. Going to go back to public comment. I have a whole second page of public comment. So we will now go to Board Policy Comments, and for that, so for Board Policy 6301, School Calendar. So we'll start with Ms. Sharon Saroff.
I left all my stuff at home, because I've been working on helping out my clients on what Baltimore County should be doing. But as far as the school calendar is concerned, the committee should be looking at what parents and teachers are saying and what students are saying as far as their responsibilities are concerned. They're not -- I don't think that they're really listening to what we have to say, because what their recommendation was and what we've said are two different things. And I'm going to request that you take me off the other ones that I signed up for, because I left my papers at home.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker for Board Policy 6301 is Dr. Farone.
This policy, line eight and nine, talks about applicable laws, and...
recent opened their electric school buses programs. And the EPA has just announced another round of founding for electric school buses. Please take advantage of all these founding opportunities and commit to transition your fleet of school buses to clean electric buses on behalf of Baltimore County children. Thank you for all your time this evening.
Thank you. Yes, we always love it when our students come in and share. So I'll go back to Mr. Rodney Houston. Ms. Sharon Saroff.
Good evening. Hope everybody is doing well. My reason for being late today was because I was on the phone with a parent of a student who has been told that her child isn't reading at the fifth grade, but she's making sufficient progress on her IEP. What's wrong with this picture? As a parent, I can say that I unfortunately heard that for my own child, who is now 27. And the only reason that my child is learning is because I made sure that they had the services that they need. That's not happening right now. When you're telling a parent that sufficient progress is at 20%, when you're telling a parent that their fifth grade child is making sufficient progress when they're still reading on the first grade or below level, that's a problem. On top of that, we're not willing to give students occupational therapy when they need it. Oh, they're functional. They can't write their name, but that's functional. You don't have enough speech and language therapists so that kids can get the services that they need. I'm hearing parents on a daily basis complaining about how much service their child is missing because you don't have the personnel to give them these services that they require. It is not okay for you to be passing a fifth grader to a middle school who can't read at the first grade level. And this is not a single student. You've got plenty of them in the school system. We have to stop lowering the bar. We have to start giving them the services that they need. And I'm going to give a shout out and a kudos to Rod McMillian because he attended Decoding Dyslexia's meeting last week. And he heard what's going on. And he was very upset about it. So I wish that everybody on your board would be like him because he's getting involved. So kudos and thank you.
Thank you. And one last time, Mr. Rodney Houston. The next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session, and for that, I call on Ms. Devasti Jones. Going to go back to public comment. I have a whole second page of public comment. So we will now go to board policy comments. And for that, so for Board Policy 6301, School Calendar. So we'll start with Ms. Sharon Saroff.
I left all my stuff at home because I'd been working on helping out my clients on what Baltimore County should be doing. But as far as the school calendar is concerned, the committee should be looking at what parents and teachers are saying and what students are saying as far as their responsibilities are concerned. They're not, I don't think that they're really listening to what we have to say because what their recommendation was and what we've said are two different things. And I'm going to request that you take me off the other ones that I signed up for because I left my papers at home.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker for Board Policy 6301 is Dr. Ferron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This policy, line eight and nine, talks about applicable laws. And then the line below, it says the board will consider feedback from the community. Again, don't mind me, I have been here a long time. I think the word "consider feedback" is a weak one. It does not really show the engagement that is in Dr. Rogers' slogan about engagement and Excel. I think it should be seriously considered. The other one that I take issue about is that the board considers holidays and it states Diwali, Lunar, Eid, Juntaan. But it really doesn't include Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah. I think this is discriminatory in nature. It should have been included. All minority religions should be inserted right here equally. I'm not really that religious myself, but what's important is our kids, when they come to school, they feel that the school system does not favor one religion over others. And the school does. Last but not least, line 28 talks about the calendar supports effective delivery of instructions. And I know I talked to you about this. Honestly, I don't think the calendar, the way it's designed, does that. It has many perks. Some are political, some are religious in nature. And that is contrary to what I always try to convince you that the focus needs to be about the students, not about Tabco or the other supportive staff or anyone else. It has to be focused on the students. What's good for the students, good for the teachers, good for the supportive staff, good for everyone else. And I wish you would consider these remarks about the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. You can stay there. Yep, you can stay there for Board Policy 8270, Board Committees.
Policy 8270 talks about your committees. I have been very impressed with Mr. McMillian's one time when he made the motion about one of the committees. And again, personally, I hope you would consider my view, being here for a long time. Honestly, I think it would be a better governance and production if you lobby the general assembly to pay you more and for the Board of Education to meet every week instead of two weeks and do away with the committees. Because committees, although they might be important for one group or one person, is repetitive in nature. And I think it would be more efficient if you, the board, are really working on a weekly basis. I know this may not really strike a good note for some people or some authorities, but I think it would be worth consideration. You might want to consider professional advice to go through the committee's performance over the past five years and see if that performance is really efficient or inefficient. So personally, as a private citizen, watching the board since 1995, I think it's spinning the wheel and I don't think really it's an efficient way of doing things. You can still do an ADHAC committee as needed for something specific that would be in your power as a chair, Madam Chair, and that will accomplish the same spirit that is written at the top of this policy. So I wish you would consider that, even if not for today, but down the road when you consider really the value. Honestly, as a person watching the board, I don't have the time to watch committees. And I feel that makes me less informed if you are meeting every week. Remember, Jensen Wang was working every day, including Sunday. I'm not really asking for that to be successful, but I think you would be more efficient. And I thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker for 8270 Board Committees is Mr. Rodney Houston. Okay, Dr. Ferron, you could go to the...
Which one?
No, we already did you. And then the next one is Mr. Alicia Magos. And Ms. Lucia Isles. We'll move on to Board Policy 8280, Memberships. And we have Dr. Ferron.
Policy 8280, and I ask for your indulgence again. Again, as a person watching the board for a very long time, I felt very much appreciative of your report last board meeting when you stated, Madam Chair, your accomplishments for the year. A long time ago, I suggested to the boards to have a list right on one of these walls. And when you get elected or start in the year, you would make what are you going to accomplish in the year? And the same thing for our superintendent. And when you accomplish that goal, you put a checkmark. Honestly, over every two weeks attending, attending the meetings, I see that the board is more involved with maintenance of effort rather than in progressing the school system into the future. And I don't mean that as an insult, you know, or lack of appreciation, but the system is designed in so much restrictive way, in so much political from behind the scene that really prevents accomplishments. And this would be really an example for you to think about efficiency and to think about leadership. Again, I remember listening to Jensen Wang about how did he make a company that is worth 30 cents? Now it's about 140. And of course, the stock split 10 times or something more than that. How did he make that? He gave the employees the freedom to think, the freedom to accomplish, the freedom to do things. So again, from myself dealing with the school system, there is so much restrictions, one of them standing up restriction there, that the system is just too rigid and does not really have that leeway to make people accomplish in the same way as private companies. I'm not really calling for abolishment of public schools or weakening it. I'm calling you to think outside the box and not really continuing policies like this, just a little bit tweak here and tweak there. I think thinking outside the box would be of benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Ferron, you could stay there for the last Board Policy 8501, the Superintendent Evaluation.
This is a hard one. And Dr. Rogers, I don't mean anything personal. I want you to know, you know, it's policy. So I know you go by contracts and so forth. But if I look back, all right, my favorite superintendent was really Dr. Hairston. What did he accomplish, all right? He was a great man, honest person, you know, from what I see. He had a heart that encompassed all the students. And you can see that when one of the students come in and speak to the board, you can see that in his face expressions. It was really genuine. That's something you didn't see in Dr. Berger. You didn't really see in Dr. Danz.
Dr. Ferron, we don't want to speak negatively about, no personal remarks. So what is the...
So basically, what I'm trying to say to you is that you do what you have to do according, obviously, to the law, but I think you need to think a little bit outside the box about how you evaluate the superintendent. And obviously, it needs to be fair and objective, but also you need to do it in a way that it does propel the system. And there is no enough time for me, obviously. Nonetheless, I really love Dr. Hairston. I want you to know.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session, and for that, I call on Ms. Devasti Jones.
Good evening, board members. There was no action taken in closed session to report.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business report on board policies. This is the first reader for these policies. And for that, I call on Ms. Christina Pumphrey, Chair of the Policy Review Committee.
Thank you. Members of the board, the Policy Review Committee asks that the board accept this report of the committee's recommendation of proposed changes to the following board policies. Board Policy 6301, School Calendar; Board Policy 8270, Board Committees; Board Policy 8280, Memberships; and Board Policy 8501, Superintendent Evaluation. These policies are presented to you on tonight's agenda as Exhibits J1 through J4.
Thank you, Ms. Pumphrey. Board members, are there any separations requested? And I do have one separation request for Board Policy 8270, Board Committees. Are there any other separation requests? So may I have a motion to accept the recommendations of the Board Policy Review Committee for Board Policies 6301, 8280, and 8501?
So moved, Frampong.
No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee. Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Chaluski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonalsky?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Lipter?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Chika Kalu?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes. Motion carries. And I will now speak to the separation request for Board Policy 8270, Board Committees. In that policy, I would like to see a section, a Section 4, for accountability. It's important that, as a board, we display and we, and our actions are in alignment with what we expect of the school system. And so, holding ourselves to a high level of accountability to ensure that we're attending the meetings. So I want to, under that accountability section, to have an attendance line that's in alignment with our requirement to attend these public board meetings, to also attend the, if you are assigned to a committee, to attend at least 75% of those committee meetings. And failure to do so can cause for, it can cause for removal from that committee. I would also, under that accountability section, would like the chair of each committee to provide a comprehensive summary of what occurred at that committee meeting. Oftentimes, when we share out the committee, when we give committee reports, oftentimes we let the people know, we let the public know, the next date and time of the committee. But when we look at, when we have board meetings, there's a nice kind of review, the five things that happened, the five things that your board did. It would be great to have something like that for the committees, just so that the public, when you don't have enough time to watch a committee meeting, you at least have that snapshot of what occurred at the committee meeting. And for that to just happen verbally during the open board meetings. And then I would like an annual review for the, on whether or not the committee is still necessary. What has the committee done to help move the school system forward? What are the recommendations that that committee made so that we are ensuring that all the committees are actually helping to move the school system forward? And lastly, I would, I recommend a cap on the number of committee members. When we look at what the research says about meaningful conversation for small committees, so if you look at, you know, the art of gathering, or leading with intent, or any of the other research about that, committee meetings should be capped at four board members. Anything more than that, I mean, we have some committees where we're one short of a quorum. And so I recommend that we have a maximum number of committee participants from the board at four. Was there any discussion? Mr. McMillian?
When you say four, isn't there somewhere, like with the Audit Committee, they talk about an odd number so that we don't have ties?
Yeah.
So if we went to four, then there's a possibility in every committee, you could have a two and two vote on something.
That's fine. Because they're just making recommendations. And so, and with the Audit Committee, so that's the only committee where it specifies a specific committee number and format. None of the other committees have that. Because, so once again, the purpose of the committees is to make recommendations to the board. So you can have a two to two vote. That doesn't stop a committee member from coming to the full board and making a motion to consider something.
Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Lipter?
Would these changes, especially the number of committee members, start? When were you envisioning them, the changes to start?
For the next committee cycle, so in July.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pumphrey?
In order for it to start in July, we'd have to make the changes and approve the policy with those changes, just to be clear.
Yes.
That all would have to happen before July.
Right.
Madam Chair, I also have my name raised. This is Ms. Hen.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Hen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in favor of increasing the communication and the transparency around the work of the committee. I think our committees do excellent work. However, I would support that change with adding the appropriate staff support. For example, publishing detailed minutes of each of our committee meeting in writing in addition to the videos that serve as minutes in terms of supporting our committee chairs with that. I believe that would only be fair. Most board members work full time, and I believe the necessary staff support would be needed to support the increased responsibilities for our committee chairs. In terms of limiting the number of committee members, I feel that that would not be advantageous and that the discussions are more rich the more participants we have. The committees have always been open to members as long as we do not have a quorum of the full board so that members can participate even if they do not vote in those meetings and that those discussions can be very fruitful when we have more participation. So I would not support that change. However, I appreciate the discussion and the suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McMillian?
Just a couple of minutes ago, you said in the next cycle, starting in July. I know we've talked about that several times, but is that in, did we vote on that?
Yes, that was in the board handbook that was voted on by the board.
Okay, now suppose the next chair comes along and she wants to... Now, we talked about, and I remember Mr. Young, I specifically asked him a question about when we start the new cycle again. And he commented, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Young, that the new people would come on and be appointed to committees shortly after they were, they came to their position, rather than wait till July if they were nominated or elected or whatever in December. You know, what were we going to do in that time lapse? So if the new chair comes along, you know, can the new chair, does she have, or he have the authority to start this in December?
And so, in the board handbook that we voted on, it states July. And so, if a new chair comes on and wants to change that, it would require the vote of the board to make that modification to the handbook.
So that was in the board handbook? So because we voted for the handbook, therefore we voted for that?
You voted for everything that's in that handbook, yes.
So if she wants, whoever wants to change it, then has to specifically pull that out?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Hen.
Follow-up to Mr. McMillian's comment. That is in direct contradiction to our policy authorizing the chair to make the committee assignments. So I believe our handbook is in contradiction to our own board policy because it is the authority of the chair to make those committee assignments. So when the chair is...
So when the Chair is elected, that authority transfers to the Chair, and any existing committee assignments would, the authority to make those assignments transfers to the current Chair.
So thank you, Ms. Hen, for that. And so, the Chair would still have the authority to make the assignments, it's just the date of when those assignments would occur. So that authority has not been removed from the Chair. It has just been strengthened and made more specific. And so, for this particular policy that we are focused on, so to go back to that accountability piece, so Ms. Hen, I know that you requested for staff to have an increased role with minutes and all of that. So these are board committees. And we want staff to be about the business of supporting students in our schools. And so, if we want the committee to continue, then it's going to have to be the Board that takes on the work of the committee. We would still have our staff liaison to help to support committee meetings, but beyond what they're currently required to do, I would not want to add that role to them. And so, the share out at the, so just like we share out, we're going to share out at the end of the meeting today, so instead of just sharing the date and the next time for the meeting, the Chair would just provide a more substantive review of what happened during that committee meeting, so that the full public is fully aware, and that they don't have to then go back and watch a whole committee meeting, just to understand what happened.
And we have administrative support for each of those meetings, whether it's the staff liaison or other administrative support staff to provide support for these committee meetings. That's provided currently. What I'm simply suggesting is that brief minutes be provided in writing, as has been the case in the past, prior to the streaming of meetings, or the video recording of those meetings, was my suggestion, to support the Chair, so that the Chair is not going back and watching those meetings and constructing the minutes from scratch. That the administrative support person would take those minutes, as has been the case in the past. And I would appreciate a response from Board Counsel as far as the term of the committee chairs, and that that term, the reason that term was in place was to coincide with the term of the board officers, because that authority does transfer with the election of officers.
Yep.
And if my understanding is correct, I would appreciate a response from Board Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you from, thank you for that, Ms. Hen, and just a point of order, so the term limit, the Chair, it's not a part of this policy review, so we will make sure that that response gets, will get to you. We will send something via email, but for the purposes of this particular policy, and we're focused on the content of this particular policy, which does not address the term limit, so we will make sure that that will, that more detailed response will get to the full board. Ms. Dominowski?
Yes, I just wanted to add my support, and I agree with a lot of what your suggestions, except for limiting to four members. I just, I know that our job at committee is to recommend, but I feel like if we had a two-two tie, that the work of that committee is not really getting its full effort. We need a stronger yes or no coming from the committee, because that's what they're supposed to be doing. Plus, if we're asking for the minutes, and a board member is being asked to keep those, to have the vice chair be a person, or secretary, or someone, you know, assigned to that, would be much, you know, be better. So, other than that, I just, I don't think that limiting each, plus, it doesn't give all the board members an opportunity to be a part of a lot of the board committees that they want to be a part of.
Thank you. Ms. Stolaski and then Ms. Pumphrey.
Thank you. I know specifically the Audit Committee, and I'm not on the Audit Committee, so I'd like Mr. McMillian or somebody else to comment, in terms of the rationale for why the magic number is five, in terms of the, what seemed to be a better number than four.
It's odd. It's just an odd number, so that you won't have a tie vote. It limits the, I mean, you could still, you could still have a tie vote, even when you have an odd number, which is why that, so that's why it doesn't really, it doesn't make sense to me, if that's the justification, because even with an odd number, someone can still say, "Oh, I abstain," or they're not at the meeting, so you could still have a tie vote. But that was, that is my understanding of the rationale for the odd number.
Okay. In hearing several people commenting that four might not be an appropriate number, I was wondering if, you know, and I can make a motion if needed, we want to change the number to five, just to compromise and, you know, honor the people that feel that four is not a good number, but also honoring your feedback in terms of what's important.
No, I appreciate that. And I, I mean, in the number, I'm not so hung up on the number, and I actually think they should go back to the Policy Review Committee, so that they could work out the details for everything. But go ahead, Ms. Pumphrey.
That was going to be my comment. And I was wondering if it was appropriate to ask Ms. Howey's advice, as far as if what she's heard is enough to send this back to committee, or if you need more input before staff works on this, to present it to us, as far as a fourth, or maybe fourth and fifth addition to this policy.
So, thank you, Ms. Pumphrey. Good evening, members of the Board. I do have several questions, and given that my staff and I will be doing the revisions on behalf of the Board, I do believe staff needs more direction, just so that the Board is fully informed. I know there's been a question about minutes and taking minutes. The revised policy specifically indicates that committees are subject to the Education Transparency Act. The Education Transparency Act is something that is only applicable to the Board of Education of Baltimore County, and requires that there be a summary of actions taken at each meeting. However, the Act is unclear as to whether or not it applies to committees. This particular policy clarifies what our practice has been, and that has been to publish the summaries within 72 hours of every meeting. So there is already a plethora of information about what has happened at your committee meetings that is available within 72 hours. So an additional requirement is probably something that needs to be discussed in terms of whether or not it will actually serve the purpose that this, this Board is seeking.
And so, what, so if a snapshot of that summary could be shared during the open session here, because what I have seen is that people aren't really watching the committee meetings, or reading those summaries, but people do watch this meeting. And so, at the end of this meeting, we have the committee updates, where you can go around, and each chair shares out what happens at their committee. So if they could pull just some key points from that summary to share out with the public, so that it's more of a, it's more substance to the share out, instead of, "We met on this date, this is the time of our next meeting, and that's it." And so, if we can just compel the chairs to be more robust in their sharing, so that the public knows what happened, and if, then if they make, they can make an informed decision to go back and watch the meeting if they want. Ms. Frumpong?
So, hearing what Ms. Howey said, as far as the summary and what you're looking for, there is an agenda item on the meeting that says, "The committee updates." So are we able to also attach those summaries, so that we then have the information supported in more detail there, but that can also support, maybe even if the committee chairs just kind of give a smaller summary? Are we able to do that?
Yes.
That would be great. Yeah. Mr. Young?
Ms. Howey, I, the question was asked about, with Chair Booker-Dwyer's suggestions, does this policy need to go back to PRC to look at those suggestions?
That's up to the Board, as to whether or not the Board wishes to vote in this space, at this time, on the recommended changes. Ms. Booker-Dwyer is free to make a motion to amend, and then the Board can act on that motion to amend. The question is whether or not the Board feels that it wishes to discuss these issues now, or you wish to defer that to the Policy Review Committee. That is up to the Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. So we'll go to Ms. Lichter, and then Ms. Pumphrey.
I'm just saying. Can I also have my hand raised, Madam Chair, just so you know?
So Ms. Hen will go to you, right after Ms. Pumphrey. Thank you.
I've just heard a couple of different things. I've heard minutes, I've heard a summary, I've heard the Chair give an oral report at this meeting. So can you just clarify what the original ask was for?
The original ask was just for more robust sharing during, when we have that section like we have today, from committee chairs, on what happened at the meeting.
So it's not really written? So if I would go through the four agenda items that were at the Curriculum Committee, and just give like a very brief, you know, synopsis, that's what you're looking for?
That's all.
So you're not really looking for a written transcript?
No.
Right. Just me being a little bit more robust in what I present at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hen, and then Ms. Pumphrey.
Yes, and thank you to Ms. Lichter for that question. Going back to your other suggestion regarding limiting the number of members, one issue the Board has faced in the past has been, not issue, we have had the practice of honoring the student members' committee requests, which has increased the number of committee members on a committee with the election of a new student member, which has not been a problem in the past. However, it's something to consider. Should a committee have five members? If we were to put this into policy, that would automatically add a sixth member to the committee, if we were to limit it. I would be in favor of not having a hard and fast rule in the policy for circumstances such as that, and also to give us the flexibility of deciding or making that determination, allowing the board officers to determine what is the appropriate number. Also, does it make sense to have the same number for every committee? Or do we want to make that determination on a committee-by-committee basis, depending on the workload of that committee? Are there individual subcommittees that a committee may have? The Equity Committee comes to mind, where there may be subcommittees that are working on particular tasks, where it may be appropriate to have a committee of six, if there are two subcommittees. So I just offer this to the Board for consideration, where it may be impractical to tie ourselves to a hard and fast rule about the number of committee members across the Board, and where we are better served by leaving it open, and where this is impractical to put in policy. So, for your consideration, I would recommend not including that in this policy.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. Ms. Pumphrey?
Okay. A couple of things. First, as far as the sharing out, I think that's more of a practice of, as board members that we should do. I personally have been trying to make a point of sharing which policies we discussed at the last meeting, and whether they went back to the Equity Committee, or whatever, just as a personal practice. And I think that's something we can do as a Board. Doesn't necessarily need to be a policy. My other questions are, again, recommendations for Ms. Howey, if this were to return to PRC for further review. Some other points that you mentioned were a section regarding accountability. Do you have more questions, or do you need more information, if we were to send this back, to have staff present that to us, as far as a section in the policy?
So, I believe what Ms. Booker-Dwyer mentioned was a Section 4, that would simply address accountability, and that that mirror what is in, I believe it's Policy 82 or 8311, perhaps, concerning attendance at board meetings. So if that is what the Chair is asking, then I believe I understand the ask.
And the other was regarding an annual review, I think, if I'm recalling correctly?
And that was not clear.
Yes. So if the Board could, so we, as a Board, last year, we came up with measures of effectiveness to know whether or not the committees that we are leading and that we are a part of is actually helping to move the school system forward. And so, to solidify these measures of effectiveness in policy somehow, to say that, so that we can definitively say that this committee helped move the school system forward, because they made these recommendations, or they did this, or they didn't do anything. And so, is this a committee that should be phased out? So having some process to evaluate our committees, and then a process to phase them out if they are no longer serving us well.
So, Madam Chair, certainly if it's the desire of the Board that this be returned, and these concepts be returned to PRC, obviously, staff will work on changes. But I, and I do not wish to belabor points and take up your time during this board meeting, but there are still questions. So those are questions that we'll continue to ask, to make sure that we provide to the Board the policy that the Board needs.
Thank you. And I know there's a couple more questions, so, Mr. Young, did you have another question?
It's not really a question, but I just want to make a motion to return this policy to PRC with the, to evaluate the suggestions by Chair Booker-Dwyer.
I second that motion. May I have a roll call vote? Or wait, any discussion? May I have a roll call vote? Oh, Ms. Frumpong.
So, one thing, I guess, when Ms. Pumphrey started talking about practice, it made me think about our handbook. So, I guess with some of these suggestions, is the policy fully the proper place for all of these to go, or should it be a part of our handbook?
I think they should be in policy. So this is important enough where it needs to be solidified in policy, because what, it needs to be in policy. I think it's that important. Ms. Pumphrey?
I think we're going to need probably further discussion in PRC, along with Counsel, to find out if it actually fits in policy or handbook, or if it's more of a Board's discretion. And then we can bring that further discussion back to the Board.
So, members of the Board, with respect to the amount of authority that the handbook carries, as opposed to your board policies in the 8,000 or in the nine series you have, you vote on them. So, to the extent that you vote on them, and that you discuss them, they have the same force, in effect, as policy.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. McMillian?
I just want to go on the record and state that at some point in time, I'm going to challenge the July 1st start date for committees, because, you know, during when we're elected and we're seated on the Board in early December, there's a seven-month gap between that point and July 1st. So at some point, I'm going to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Stolaski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Dominowski?
No.
Ms. Hen?
No.
Ms. Frumpong?
Yes.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Chikakulu?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the report on the FY 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and for that, I call on Mr. Hartlove.
At the, at the last Audit Committee meeting, we actually brought forward the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Our auditor, Clifton Larson Allen, was there to answer questions, as were staff, our controller, myself, a senior accountant, were all there to answer questions. And we have the, in summary, it's a clean audit, and I think we had some nice discussion at that meeting, and I don't know if there's any questions that Board members have.
Any questions from the Board members? Mr. McMillian?
Mr. Hartlove, there were some findings, however. And are they included in this document?
I believe so. I believe that there's.
I didn't see this document until this afternoon, you know, it was sitting on our dais.
Yes. We, everything, I believe, is in here. There may be, there may be another. There may be, there may be another attachment that is, should be given to you as well. But yes, that's, it, that should be in here, yes.
Isn't there a letter to management from Clifton Larson or Allen?
Yes, and I don't know if that is included in this or not, if that's separate. But we did discuss.
And that management letter talks about the findings?
It does, yes.
And was one of the findings the fact that we were three weeks late presenting the information to the auditor?
That is correct. We, the, well, let's, let's back up. The audited, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report is due to the State on September 30. In order to make that date, our auditors like the information in earlier, earlier in September. It's not really a set-in-stone deadline, but in order to do what they need to do, they, we can't just hand it to them on the 29th and say, you know, have it done by the 30th. So by the time we did present it to the auditors, they didn't have enough time to get it to meet the September 30 date. But there were no ramifications to that from the State. We were able to talk to the State about why we weren't able to make the date. We did have some turnover, key turnover in the middle of the process, which caused us to be late. But there, but the MSDE was understanding and accepted our report late.
And what do we do, what do we need to do to make sure that the Board members receive that management letter? Do we need a motion for that, or can you make sure that we all get it?
We can make sure that you get that, yes. You should, you should have that. Yes, you should, you should have that, yes.
And, right, and just to clarify, so Board leadership, Audit Committee leadership, and the Audit Committee received the letter? So it can go, it's more that we can share it with everyone? That's not a problem?
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hartlove.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I have one last question.
Oh, yes, Ms. Hen.
Or request. Once we receive that letter, because I have not seen it, I request that we have another opportunity to ask questions once we've reviewed the management letter that Mr. McMillian has referred to.
Okay, and you can always share your, yep, that's fine, yep.
If this could be added as a.
Yeah, you can always send any questions that you have as well.
Well, I believe the public has the right to hear any questions or discussion once the full Board has received that letter. If I ask that this be added, and I, if I need to make a motion, I will at this time, that this agenda item be moved to the next Board meeting so that Board members can ask questions in a public session following receipt of the management letter. So that is my motion. And that this agenda item be continued at that time.
And, so, yeah, if we, let me look on. Yeah, I believe it is posted on Board Docs for the public. And I do think this is why.
The report is, but if Mr. McMillian is referring to something that the full Board has not received, he shared information that on my perusal of the ACFR, I have not seen.
And so, yeah, if you, it's, it's in Board Docs. On the page 20. So, and this is, so once again, so this just gets back to my point with the committee meetings because people don't watch the committee meetings or go and pull up the report. So if you go to the Audit Committee meeting and you go to the agenda, it is posted there. Yeah, so it's, it's in there.
Is it the management letter also? Okay.
Yep, yep, it's all there. And so I guess prior to these meetings, we'll have to go to every committee meeting to make sure that we see everything. And this just gets to my point with the committees. I just don't think they need to.
Well, Madam Chair, this is an item, this is an item for discussion by the full Board at this full Board meeting.
So yes, you can discuss, it is there.
Is hearing about it. So if we're discussing it for the public as a full Board, then this letter should be included with this document. It's our opportunity as a Board to ask questions of staff. And had I known, it should be provided to the full Board with the other material.
It is provided to the full Board.
So we could ask questions of staff.
It's in the book, it is in the book. Yeah.
And, and I'm requesting, and there's a motion on the floor, to have an opportunity to ask questions once the Board has had the chance to review it. So.
Okay, so, I mean, so there's a motion on the floor by Ms. Hen. Is there a second?
Second, Stalaski.
Could you restate your motion, Ms. Hen?
Yes, my motion is for this agenda item to be added to the next Board meeting so that Board members have the opportunity to ask questions about this report subsequent to receiving the management letter.
Oh wait, so, Ms. Harvey, do you?
Right. Because initially, the concern was that the letter was not in the report that we received. And we sense that it is in the report that we received. So I'm just seeking some clarity on what we're asking and what the value add is to this discussion.
Yes.
Can I just make a point of order? Do we have the motion and a second? And are we, I just want to figure out where we are at this point.
And so we have a motion and we have a second, and then we have, Ms. Stalaski's second. And so, but Ms. Lichter, there's a point of order from Ms. Lichter. And the point of order is, is there, does an agenda item require a motion?
Is that the protocol we use to get agenda items? Yes, okay, that's okay.
Okay. Okay, so we are discussing.
And I just want to clarify, the management letter is separate from the book, but it was, I believe, we believe it was in the packet that was with the book that was delivered for the Board members. So there should be copies of the letter, maybe it did not get distributed. But there, it's not in the binding, it's a separate. But it was fully, it was fully discussed at the Audit Committee meeting, as Mr. McMillian referred to. So, you know, we were very transparent with, with, with all the materials. And we had an auditor there who actually was, is responsible for the audit and answered all the questions that the Board members have or had at that time.
Right, so what, so, but let's go back to Ms. Harvey's question. She asked for clarity. Who was your question directed to? Because I have no clear, yeah. I would think to the maker of the motion. Okay, Ms. Hen, could you please respond to Ms. Harvey's question?
Well, I will summarize my concern, and that is that there was information shared with the Audit Committee that was not shared with the full Board, that the full Board needs to have in order to ask informed questions about this audit. So I appreciate Mr. McMillian sharing that that information was shared with Audit Committee. And I would appreciate an executive summary of that information, if staff could present that at the next meeting to the full Board so that the full Board, and for that information, you know, the full Board can now go back, knowing that that information was shared at the Audit Committee, review the Audit Committee meeting, review any materials that were not provided in Board Docs, since it's now clear that they were not provided in Board Docs for this meeting, where it's on the agenda, and come prepared to the next meeting, able to ask questions that we may have of this audit. Because clearly, there's a disconnect and information that was shared only with the Audit Committee that the full Board did not have access to in order to be able to ask questions. My motion asks for the opportunity to be able to have all of that information in advance to receive a summary presentation. I'm not asking for a recap of the Audit Committee, but to have a summary presented to us and to be able to have the opportunity to ask questions of that. Because this is important information for the full Board to have. I would have appreciated for it to be presented to the full Board, but since we're beyond that now, can we receive a summary of it and for the public to hear it as well, have the opportunity to ask questions? That's what my motion is intended to do.
Ms. Domonowski?
So I will now make the motion to call the question, to save time for here. So, Madam Chair, I call the question.
I just have a point of clarity real quick. Because the one thing that we have, we have a little bit of disagreement about is whether the letter was included or not. And I, the letter that they're referring to over here is on page 14, the Independent Auditors' Report. Is that the management letter that was?
No, there is a separate letter.
There is a separate letter, okay, that's, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
And Dr. Rogers, did you want to provide any?
Sure, just because there's been a lot of conversation and the public is probably wondering what the conversation is about. The management letter, I think Mr. Hartlove attempted to provide an overview to everyone. It was a letter explaining from the Financial Division why they were late giving the information to the auditors. It spoke to having staff turnover, and I believe it might have included the date that the new director was hired in that letter. And then, so Mr. Hartlove attempted to make sure everyone had that information. That letter, when it was written and accepted by the State, was also shared directly with leadership. And what Mr. Hartlove was attempting to do was to answer any questions about the audit, particularly since Clifton Larson and Allen, the independent auditors, were at the Audit Committee meeting and spoke to the findings in that letter. So again, this management letter that everyone is talking around is that the Division of Finance presented information to the outside auditors three weeks later than they needed to receive it to meet the September 30 deadline. This is not about findings in terms of how finances were managed in any way. And again, that letter was presented to Board leadership and to Audit Committee leadership. I believe someone has confirmed it's posted on Board Docs for the Audit Committee. If not, it can simply be forwarded to all members. But Mr. Hartlove is here and ready and available to answer any questions about the Comprehensive Financial Report.
And so may I have a roll call vote on the motion on the floor? Ms. Goldber, could you repeat the motion for the Board members? And so it's the motion, Mr. Young? It was seconded by Ms. Stalaski, yep, go ahead. For that first motion, yes. Yes, it's the first, Ms. Hen's first motion, yes. So Ms. Hen, could you repeat your first motion?
Sure. My motion is to add, as an agenda item to the next scheduled Board meeting, a discussion of the FY 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
So it was seconded by Ms. Stalaski. We engaged in discussion. May I have a roll call vote?
And I call the question.
May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Stalaski?
Yes.
Dr. Savoy?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Domonowski?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Ms. Frampong?
Yes.
Ms. Lichter?
Yes.
Ms. Pumphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Chikakulu?
Yes.
Ms. Booker-Dwyer?
No, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hartlove. The next item on the agenda is the report on Academic Achievement, Report on Blueprint Pillars III and IV Update. And for that, I call on Dr. DiDonato and Dr. Elmandor.
Good evening, Chair Booker-Dwyer, Dr. Rogers, and members of the Board. And Dr. Elmandor and I are excited to provide you with an update on Pillar Three and Four of the Blueprint and BCPS's implementation of the Blueprint. We're going to focus a lot of our information tonight on Pillar Three as Pillar Four. You received components of presentations at the last Board meeting of some of the elements of Pillar Four, both the mental health services and supports for students as well as services and supports to our multilingual learners. So we're going to touch on Pillar Four a little bit, but our focus is really going to be on Pillar Three. Okay, as you see, Pillar Three focuses on college and career readiness. And right here, you can see what the Blueprint identifies for students. So it establishes a standard for college and career readiness. It sets targets of, for us, for the students of how they need to meet that. So in a future slide, we'll see the criteria. It also talks about us providing students with multiple pathways once meeting college and career readiness so that they can obtain post-secondary opportunities and outcomes even prior to graduating from high school within BCPS. And it also has us looking at how are we supporting those students who are not yet, who have not yet met CCR. Right now, the Blueprint doesn't identify a way for students to demonstrate college and career readiness if they don't meet some of those first indicators. However, along the way, we are still looking at their progress, still providing opportunities. There are some opportunities that we provide in BCPS whether students have met college and career readiness or not with regards to our CTE programs and pathways. That is not sort of a binding factor for our students. However, we will talk about some of the other opportunities that they are provided. When we look at our curriculum and students meeting college career readiness, this really is something that starts well before they get to high school, while the measurement happens in high school. It really talks about the work that we need to do all along the way for our students. So how are we providing them with high-quality instruction and access to rigorous instruction at grade-level standards all through elementary and middle school? Because without doing that, they're not going to meet those designated standards that have been established for them and measured at the high school level. So how do we provide those opportunities for them? We ensure that they have access to high-quality instructional materials. That is part of what was brought forward with looking at our secondary ELA curriculum, the elementary ELA curriculum that was just purchased for implementation beginning last school year, and our aligned math program. Comprehensive Literacy and Math Plans, those are both part of components that every school system needs to submit to MSD. And that really outlines the services and supports that we provide to students, our expectations for student learning outcomes. The math plan was just submitted to MSD, we expect to receive feedback, and then we'll update it accordingly. Targeted supplemental instruction and evidence-based intervention, so that's looking at some of the different support services and models that we provide to students, whether it's intensive during school day tutoring, it can be the interventions that we provide with reading instruction during the school day, it could be the double math periods that are provided in our middle schools for our sixth graders who are working on grade level in our Math VI courses. So this really looks at what are those supports and services we're providing to students to ensure that they are on that trajectory to meet college and career readiness. Training for all teachers in pre-K in the science of reading, and actually, this is really extended to our school administrators as well as our all elementary school educators, that they really. that they really understand those foundational skills that students need and the process by which students acquire their beginning reading skills. Consistent content-oriented instruction in Science and Social Studies. Again, when we look at those indicators that students need to be able to demonstrate college and career readiness, Science and Social Studies instruction, while it's measured on MISA, but when we also look at some of the indicators for college and career readiness criteria, it looks at a student's GPA overall in high school, which means that they are achieving in all of their content area classes. So that is also critical, that again, learning begins at the elementary level and that that continues for our students along the way. This is the slide, the slide that I was referring to, as far as the college and career readiness standards. You see two different pathways here for students. So MSD originally identified that students needed, would be identified as meeting college and career readiness standards by receiving a score of a 3 or 4 on the English MCAP or a 3 or 4 on the math MCAP. You can also see that there were subscores with regards to if a PARC assessment had been taken, or a student receiving a score of greater than 520 on the math SAT was another criteria. That criteria was in place for the Blueprint initially. They then reviewed that to look at, should tests alone be the only metrics to determine a student being college and career readiness, college and career ready? MSD determined to make some revisions to that. So then you see the rectangle on your left-hand side, and so that's looking at the other option for a student to be identified as meeting college and career readiness, and that is cumulative unweighted GPA of a 3.0 or greater at the end of Grade 10, as well as achieving an A, B, or C in algebra. So that that were the combination of the 3.0 average GPA unweighted with a 3 or 4 on the Algebra I MCAP. So looking at there are students who are really strong test takers, and so they may have met the indicators based on state assessments. There are other students that, based on their work in school, their GPA, and then their both cumulative GPA, as well as in Algebra I, that that may be the pathway that they were identified for meeting CCR.
Okay, thank you. And this slide really serves to drill down a little bit on the slide that Dr. DiDonato just shared. And so when we're talking about helping our students to be CCR, we're really breaking into three buckets. Our first bucket is for grades nine and 10, and what we're doing there, what we're really focusing on is making sure that we're doing everything we can so that they are CCR by the end of Grade 10. So we're really focusing on ELA and math instruction and their achievement in those areas. As Dr. DiDonato referred to, the 3.0 grade point average, we're helping them to be as close to or above that GPA as possible. And then, of course, in grades nine and 10, we are preparing them to be successful on MCAP. The second bucket is what we're talking about when students actually met CCR. And so there are, as we mentioned, various pathways. Our students can enroll in both Advanced Placement and International Baccalaureate Programming. Also, our students can access dual enrollment, which I know you've heard about here before, with CCBC. So our students can take free courses with CCBC, up to two in the fall and spring semesters of their junior and senior years. And then in a future slide, I'm going to talk a little bit more about this CTE credential or youth apprenticeship. So I'll give you more detail about that in just a few minutes. But then our third bucket is really for our students who are in 11th and 12th grade and who have not met CCR. And Dr. DiDonato referred to that a little bit already, but we want to make sure that we have plans in place for each student who has not met CCR, if they have not. So we provide additional instructional opportunities for them and pathways for them to meet CCR. And then finally, we give them other opportunities to take the MCAP to meet success. One of the requirements of Blueprint is this career counseling idea, and I think one of the most important things to pull out of this is a nomenclature thing here, where Blueprint talks about career counseling, BCPS uses the term career navigator. So you've probably heard that we have career navigators, one in each high school, and that person is really responsible for sharing these different pathways with students. So our career navigators are in all four high schools, but they work with both high schools and middle schools primarily right now, and will be expanding their work both in middle school and in elementary school. The career navigators also work with CCBC and what we affectionately call DUD, Department of Economic and Workforce Development. In fact, we have been meeting with CCBC and DUD at least a weekly, if not a couple times a week recently, to make sure that we're all on the same page. And then our career navigators also work with our BCPS transition facilitators and our college counselors. And finally, you can see the bullets up here on the slide, talking about grades four through eight. So our career navigators are really starting to get into our middle schools as well and share some of these career ideas with our middle schools. And the primary vehicle for sharing information with our middle school students is through our partnership with Junior Achievement. Perhaps some of you are able to see online or in person the CTE storefront ribbon cutting. So that was part of what we're talking about when we're talking about career navigation for our middle school students. Next slide, please. Oh, that's you. Thank you. Okay, so digging a little bit deeper into what our career navigators do, and so you can see this slide here, it kind of breaks it down pretty well for us. You see Zello there on the right. You may know that we used to use Naviance, we use Zello now, and our career navigators have become adept at using this for the reasons you see on the slide. So what we focus on are making sure that students know what their strengths are, so that they can really make some good choices going forward. And so our career navigators talk to all students in high school especially about what their strengths might be, using surveys and various other tools, including Zello. Then we help the students to know what's actually out there that might be related to their strengths and their interests. And finally, we let them know the steps that they might be able to take to get to that, to achieve that goal that is aligned with their interests and their strengths. This is an exciting slide. This is something that we work on daily. One of the requirements from the Blueprint is that 45% of our students would have an industry-recognized credential or complete the high school level of a registered apprenticeship by 2031. So the growth target here is 2% per year. Just to share some data with you that is not in this slide, in school year 2223, we had 77 apprenticeships. In school year 2324, we had 162 apprenticeships. And then this past summer, we had 64 apprenticeships already that have been started. So we're obviously on track to surpass even our 2324 school year numbers. And as my CTE team likes to remind me, we are way ahead of our other LEAs in the state.
So to give a little bit of, to give some highlights of Pillar Four. So Pillar Four looks at more resources to ensure student success. So that's really looking at our community schools, which you got to see one of our community schools showcased with our spotlight on BCPS, with the wonderful work that they do as far as really uniting resources within a community to support our students, and that is through community outreach and resources, after-school programming, events for parents with students, and really those wraparound services to support our students. Pillar Four also really focuses on enhancing and expanding school mental health supports. In addition to mental health, it's also our school-based health clinics, our health assistants in many of our community schools to provide those supports for our students. You had a full breadth picture of the mental health services and supports for our students from Ms. Mustafa during the last board meeting. We also focus in Pillar Four on services and supports for our students who are multilingual learners and those students receiving special education services. And you'll receive a full report on services and supports for our students receiving special education services in an upcoming board meeting. But during our last board meeting, there was an overview of some of the curricular changes that we've made to support our multilingual learners, the staffing and resources that we're providing in schools in order to ensure that we are really trying to support our students. Part of this area for us was the decentralization of our ESOW centers. So providing students supports in their neighborhood schools also allows them to access all those other resources, like community school resources, because they're in their neighborhood school, versus resources that can be provided, but they're in the place that they're being bused to. So this really supports our students in a variety of ways by really looking at our service delivery model and making that change for our students. And if you have any questions, we certainly can try to answer them for you.
Thank you. Questions from the board members? Ms. Dominowski? Yes. On Slide Three, it talks about evidence-based interventions, and you did mention the ELA interventions. What interventions do we have for math?
So at the elementary level, we have our Bridges Intervention Kit, which is aligned with our elementary math curriculum. For secondary, we do not have an identified math intervention. There's intervention support provided within IM. However, that is an area that we are looking at through our RFI process.
So how soon will we get something? Have we ever had anything for secondary math interventions?
I can tell you in the year and a half I've been chief academic officer, no. Prior to me, as an elementary principal, I don't recall strategic or specific math interventions, aside from what was implemented with Bridges, but I can certainly look into that and get back to you.
It's not, I'm just more concerned, how fast are we moving to get an intervention in place with, for our secondary math students?
Well, like any purchase of anything, it has to go through the RFI process. There's other, we have several pilots. We talked in Curriculum Committee about the Conmingo pilot, which is, again, impact during school-day tutoring, that's for AI-supported through Khan Academy, that's in alignment with our illustrative math program, and our high-impact in-person tutoring that's going on in some of our schools within a pilot also.
Do these pilots have to be approved by, like, go through Contract Committee to be approved?
If they have fiscal impact, yes. If not, no, because there's MOUs that go through, like purchasing, so they're approved as far as those processes, but there's not a fiscal impact with the Conmingo one that is through MSD identified BCPS to participate in that pilot. So there is an approved MOU with Khan Academy that went through BCPS procurement office for that.
So only if it costs us something monetarily, it goes through a contract?
Well, it has a contract or an MOU agreement, but as far as like an approval through Contracts Committee, I believe it's if it has a fiscal impact.
I'm just asking because I would like to see those pilots and hear about the research and why they were chosen. It could be free and be terrible, or it could cost $10 million and be amazing.
Absolutely. And so the pilots that we've engaged in are all, have been done in collaboration with MSD. So the pilot with, that's currently with, in partnership with UMBC at Woodlawn Middle School, was done through the Maryland Math Tutoring Grant. So it was approved, identified through MSD's vetting, and in partnership with UMBC. Very similarly, the Conmingo one was, again, another one that was approved and recommended through MSD. So it is certainly with our State Department of Education partners that we're engaging in these and not something that's sort of just randomly selected.
Okay, I understand. I just, I think that our community members would like to know more about those pilots than just to hear the name, because when I hear AI and basically anything AI when it comes to schools, and it just means more computer time to me, more screen time, and I, it's a red flag for me. It doesn't mean it doesn't work, I just, it's just a red flag. My last question, sorry, I'll clear up. Does every BCPS high school have an opportunity for?
Career Navigator?
No, apprenticeships, opportunities. Is there apprenticeship opportunity within every, just one? Like, is there? Yes.
Apprenticeships are open to everyone in the system, correct?
But available one site at every school? Does that make sense? Like, or do, would they have, do some schools have to do dual creditship through BCB, whatever? CCBC?
So there's a difference between apprenticeships and dual enrollment.
Right, right.
Apprenticeships can be within BCPS, so BCPS has some apprenticeships. In fact, there was one that was featured just a couple days ago, I think, with Hareford High School. And then there are apprenticeships that are outside of BCPS, but the CTE office facilitates all of those to get those connections made. And then there's dual enrollment, which is open to everyone who is CCR to take free courses with CCBC.
But so like, Hareford has that apprenticeship within their, is there something like that in-house in every, not just like, let me get you connected to this high school over here, they have that, you can go, you can transfer over there? Can they stay at their own home school and get an apprenticeship that way?
It depends on what the student wants. So if the student wants something that is an apprenticeship that is offered in Baltimore County Public Schools, then certainly. But if they want something that is like with a childcare agency, which is what many of our students do, then they would have to go with that childcare agency. So it depends on the, and that's really the great thing about apprenticeship, is that it's really geared towards the student interests and what they choose to do. So it depends on what they want to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other question? Ms. McMillian?
This question is for Dr. Rogers. Recently, I've engaged in several conversations about the Blueprint being paused. If that happens, what happens to all the work that our people have put into developing these different strategies?
So thank you for that question, Mr. McMillian. I am not aware of the State Superintendent or the AIB sharing that the entire Blueprint would be paused. In practicality, it is not possible to pause the entire thing, and I say that because a major component of the Blueprint is the foundation formula, which is your per-people expenditure. You also have, as you know, the Concentration of Poverty Grant to keep the community schools going. We have 91 community schools. You also have other factors like pre-K expansion, as well as what we're speaking about here with dual college access and AP exams for students. So to just posit, you have students who are in the pipeline. What we know and what we're anticipating, based on the information, particularly very specific information shared by the Spending Affordability Committee, is the percentage, because we were given the out-years until 2032, what school systems could expect. The percentage that we're expecting was from 1.7%, which is what we have this year, to 4.97%, almost 5%, doubling the funding that we received this year. What we're expecting is the increase will not come. I have not heard any indications indicating that they would cut the foundation amount at this point. You can certainly pause things like expansion, because those are things that you haven't started yet, but it's pretty difficult to pause things like foundation, which account for every single student that goes to school every day in the state.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Ms. Frempong?
Good evening. I just had a question on the new, I guess, career navigator. We went from Naviance to Zello, I believe was the name. Can you talk about the criteria that you used to select Zello, I guess, and why did we make that transition?
So I'm going to try to help Dr. Elmandorff with that. That was actually a contract that I went through about a year and a half, a year ago, with our Office of School Counseling, so I can't actually speak to the criteria, but it went through the same RFI process, evaluation with, you know, multiple stakeholders and constituents that reviewed all the products, or vendors that responded to it, and based on product features, college and career planning components, integration within our other systems, usability with students, as well as families. Those are all some of the factors that are considered when identifying which product, that that was the one that was selected over Naviance.
And I just have one question regarding the CCR standard, because it can be confusing to parents when they see Option 1 and Option 2, and this, or this, and that. And so, could you just speak a little bit, and I know I'm a parent in BCPS, I know I can just log into Focus and see, is my son CCR ready or not? So can you just talk a little bit about how you're communicating to parents the stat and how parents can check? I mean, I know Focus is the go-to portal, but anything else that you all are doing to help bring clarity, because this can be confusing for some parents?
Absolutely. So our Office of School Counseling, in partnership with the Office of Curriculum Instruction, did send letters to families at the start of the school year. They also received letters last spring, based on where their student was at that time, with their student's current status. And so those letters were sent to all parents of students in 11th and 12th grade, so that they had that information of where their child stood then. And last spring, they were sent, again, to the rising 11th and 12th graders. So communicating good old paper, as well as digitally through Focus, so that we do try to connect with our families.
Thank you, and I definitely encourage all parents, just go onto Focus and see where your child is, and if you have not gotten that, received that letter, definitely look for it.
Contact your high school counselor. They'd be really glad to talk with you and help you with that.
Dr. Savoy?
I just wanted to ask one question. Where it says enhance and expand school mental health supports. Are you working with a special clinic or hospital?
So at the last board meeting, and I'm going to refer to Ms. Mustafa's presentation, they talked about the various additional mental health supports that were provided. So that is everything from our partnership with those, are those universal supports that we provide? So additional social workers in schools, as well as, sorry, I'm gonna look through her presentation. Our partnership with like Catholic charities and some of the private organizations that do onsite counseling with students. We also have our online mental health supports that any of our middle and high school students can access. This provides some of the work that's done with the Mental Health Advisory Council. So it's not one specific agency in and of itself, but schools can partner with, I don't even know how many are on there, but 40 to 50 different partners that are approved through BCPS to provide mental health partner services onsite at schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Chika Kalu?
For the math mastery section of the CCR standard, since it says to earn a final course grade over A, B, or C in Algebra I, with the new semester system, just how would that look for students who may have not received, like received in the first semester, but in the second? Just how would that framework go?
So, go ahead.
They have to pass both sections.
Yes.
Yes.
With an A, B, or C in both.
Okay, so you, they can't just take the average of two?
Yeah, no.
Okay, good.
That's a great clarifying question. Thank you for that for all the students out there.
Exactly. Pass it off.
Any other questions? Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the report on academic achievement, report on literacy intervention. And for that, I call on Dr. D. Donato and Dr. Kraft.
And I'm going to introduce some wonderful people from our ELA office to come on up.
And I'll turn it over to Dr. Rogers.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to get the team started. We are pleased to prevent, provide a report on literacy and intervention grades K through 12. We want to get started with, move to the first slide, please. With, there we go. With reminding everyone about literacy in Baltimore County Public Schools. Based on support from the Board of Education, we were able to implement a new literacy curriculum in elementary schools starting last year. Last year, we began to pilot a secondary literacy curriculum, grade six through 12, and are continuing that work this year. Science of reading training for elementary starters, teachers started in earnest last year for year one. As a result of these changes, for the first time in over a decade, our new curriculum is aligned to Maryland state standards. This is true, of course, for the pilot curriculum as well. Our new curriculum is rooted in the science of reading. And we have a new multilingual learner curriculum that we're implementing this year, which is aligned to the state standards, as well as the teacher training for the, for this entire school year. We have shared before that in order to have sustained and systemic improvement and achievement for students, that it begins with high-quality instructional materials. There needs to be robust professional learning opportunity for teachers, ongoing opportunities for teachers to get together to look at the progress of students as a part of professional learning communities, and in real time, go back and make changes inside of the classroom to ensure that students are learning at high levels. On this slide, you also see that our data is starting to change as a result of just one year of implementation. With that being said, this is, we are now in year two of the elementary curriculum and ready to bring forward in the spring, a recommendation for secondary literacy curriculum. If we think about the data that we've had across the system for the last decade, there are students that were not meeting with success for a long time in the area of literacy. Literacy touches every single subject matter. And so we saw that same trend across other subject matters. And so even though we are seeing signs of progress, not only in where students ended up at the end of the year for their reading levels, but when they came back from summer, the percentage of students that were reading at or above grade level, as well as the percentage of students that were scoring above the 61st and 50th percentile in the year. There are still some students, because this is year one, who need interventions. There are still students who are reading below grade level, and we are equally committed to making sure that those students progress and move forward as well. And so this team is here to provide detailed information on how we are providing interventions to our students in elementary schools and secondary schools.
Thank you so much for framing that for us, Dr. Rogers. And so our team is here, as Dr. Rogers said. I'm Jody Wicks, I'm the director of ELA. And I have with us Dr. Pam Wolf, who's the coordinator for elementary ELA, and Ms. Rachel Goyshevich, who is our newest coordinator for secondary ELA. And so as Dr. Rogers shared, we just want to give you a little bit of information about the interventions we have in place and the plans we have to help support student achievement.
For literacy intervention, we use the Response to Intervention framework. And that allows us, the purpose of that is that there's an early identification for students that might be struggling with reading, that we can provide just-in-time support. This graphic shows the process, the cycle that we use to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students. Everything begins with assessment. We base all our decisions in assessment. And there's a universal screening that we conduct every year, several times a year. And that really is the indicator light that the child may struggle with learning to read. And then from that, that data is analyzed. And many times when it's, we equillate it to a check engine light when it comes on. You don't know what's wrong, but you know there might be a problem. So at that point, a diagnostic assessment would be administered. And that diagnostic assessment helps to pinpoint more, and to be able to pinpoint what area of reading the child may be struggling in. And at that point, then a team would get together to look at all the data points, multiple data points, and create a plan for that child and the intervention, the student, what they need. The intervention would begin. And then during an intervention, we always make sure we're progress monitoring. So a beginning time and an end time is set. And instead of just going blindly through, we want to take that data points and assessment points to make sure what we're doing is working and we're seeing growth for the student, or we would want to change the course of action. We progress monitor minimally at least once a month. And if it's a more intense intervention, it would be multiple times over the course of weeks. And many of our schools, we're progress monitoring every two weeks. And then the team will get back together after a couple of weeks, look more closely at all the data points, and determine if we continue, if we do need to do more assessment, if we continue the course of action or change our plan.
Like Dr. Wolf mentioned, we use a variety of assessments for students to ensure that we're really focusing on that whole child and what that individual needs to be successful. So here are the screeners that we offer. And again, those screeners are really meant to give us a sense of, is there any issue with the student being able to read? And from here, then we offer that diagnostic. And this helps us pinpoint, okay, how can we provide this support? What additional support might the student need? So we have the phonological awareness screening, we have the beginning and advanced decoding surveys, and we also have the grade assessment. And then we also have our formative and our summative assessments that are used along the way. And for example, we have the daily classwork and assessments, as well as those end-of-unit assessments that provide both leading and lagging data for us, so that we can really determine where are these areas of growth, what would be best to support this individual child. In BCPS, we offer tiered literacy intervention support. So all of our students receive strong, research-based tier-one instruction. And within tier one, students may need some additional support, and that is provided directly by our teachers and our support. And then from there, based on those assessments, students may need additional, more intensive support. And that's where tier two comes in. And you can see here, this is about 20% of our students, and we provide that systematic explicit instruction. And then for students who indicate that they may need some additional support, we have our most intensive support, and that's our tier three. And here, again, we can really pinpoint what do individual students need to be as successful as possible in reading and continue growing.
We ground all of our decision-making in the science of reading. And this model, Scarborough's Reading Rope, is a great visual to show all the different strands of reading that have to become both accurate and automatic for a student to become a skilled reader. At the top of the rope is the language comprehension strands. So that, those are all the pieces that go into being able to understand what we read, our background knowledge, vocabulary instruction, verbal reasoning, language structures, how the text is structured. Word recognition is another part of the strand, and that's those foundations of reading, our phonological awareness, being able to decode text to read what's in front of us. Also, spelling is part of the word recognition, and then sight word recognition. We use this to pinpoint from the diagnostic assessments where a strand might need more support, where one of the areas of reading that might need some more support. In some cases, it's more than one, to make sure, to ensure that we can use this to guide our decision-making to support the intervention that the student receives. In elementary, we began, again, like Ms. Goyshevich said, with very strong tier-one core instruction. And within that core instruction, students are receiving supplemental support as well. They're getting small group differentiated as many times as needed. Tier-two interventions, if you think about the reading rope, we have interventions to support all parts of that reading rope and how a child learns to read. So we have our word recognition interventions. We have fluency. Fluency is that bridge to language comprehension. Is the child be able to read with expression? Do they attend to punctuation? Are they able to read at an appropriate rate, that they're not laboriously decoding? And then for language comprehension, we have also approved interventions in the, that are grounded in the science of reading. And then you'll also see the tier three for the more intense. Visualizing and verbalizing, which is one of our interventions that you'll see on both tiers, tier two and tier three. What happens with an intervention is not just, the tier is not just the name of the program or the program we're using. Intervention, it's the intensity, it's how it's delivered. So I can increase the intensity by the group. The size of the group is going to get smaller in tier three. I'm going to go down to fewer students. I can increase the intensity through the frequency, how many times I meet with a child, the duration, how long, how long that intervention is. Visualizing and verbalizing is also an intervention that can be layered upon any content area and any reading we're doing. So it is not, it's not, it supports a child in all their content areas, which is also very effective.
So for secondary literacy intervention for tier two, for word recognition support, we offer Just Words and HD Word. And we offer for language comprehension, Read 180 and ILET. And we'll provide some examples of the data in just a minute. And then for tier three, we currently offer Wilson, Orton-Gillingham. And for language support, like Pam mentioned, similar to elementary, we also offer visualizing and verbalizing.
We are leveraging technology this year and some new features within our technology platforms that we are more systematically tracking and monitoring intervention. So we're using Focus, and we're using Performance Matters. Focus is, we are now scheduling interventions K to 12. So any student that's in a reading intervention, it's being scheduled county-wide, so we can keep track of that at a county level. And also, it ensures that when a child moves from school to school, that follows them with them. And we don't have to rely on papers following the child, that it's real, in time, real-time data for the teachers that are getting the student. We're being able to schedule who's teaching the intervention, what interventions the child is receiving, and how long they're in an intervention as well. Performance Matters, we're using for more teacher-facing. And what's happening is the teacher's actually recording attendance if the child is there and present for the intervention. So we can monitor, is that a problem also with the learning to read? And then we can also look at that data over time with the progress monitoring scores to see if any adjustments need to be made. So everything's in one place now, instead of different record-keeping that we've used in the past. This is a sample of what progress monitoring looks like from a teacher view. So you can see the bottom, the horizontal line are the weeks of instruction, and the vertical line would be whatever probe or progress monitoring we're using. And that would depend on the intervention and the need of child. The black lines that are horizontal are the start of the intervention. And then intervention isn't a lifelong sentence. It isn't a lifelong, it shouldn't be forever. It should, we should be monitoring, and it should be for a certain amount of weeks. So for this specific intervention, it's about a 12 weeks, and we're going to, we're going to have a goal in those 12 weeks of where we want the child to be and monitor if they're approaching that. And then you can see the student data points for each progress monitoring probe that's given, to see if that student's making growth, or if we need to make any changes.
So here's an example of our data for our tier-two intervention program, for one of them, which is Read 180. And here you can see on the slide, beginning of the year data compared to middle of the year and end of the year. As a student progresses through the program, the goal is that they can continue or progress and read on grade level, above grade level. So you'll see here, the colors of red, orange, and yellow decreasing overall as we continue through the year. And that's the same for going in grade nine, from a 63 in red to a 27. And then for grades, grade 10, going from a 70 to 40, we want to see those numbers decrease, because that ultimate goal is for students to read on or above grade level. And we use the growth measure assessment. And this just provides you with an overview for six through 10 of where we're seeing that decline for students in going from reading to or more grade levels below to being able to read on or above. So here, we have six, seven, eight, nine, 10. And we'll just give you a moment to take a look. And again, you'll notice those numbers decreasing. And then for ILET, we offer, we offer the grade assessment. And so for ILET, you'll see on the screen, really going from that grade level equivalency will be increasing as students progress through the program. So here, we have depicted our beginning of the year data and our end-of-year data, and we want to see those increasing. Ultimately, in both programs, your goal is for students to improve their grade level equivalencies. It's just depicted in different formats here with the grade, the grade measure, as well as the growth measure on the previous one.
And we would, that wraps up our presentation, but we would love to open it up to any questions you may have.
Questions from board members. We'll go right around, start Ms. DeLuski.
Yes, hi. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a quick question of clarification.
Yes.
I think it was slide 12. In terms of the grade level equivalency, is it typical for an average student making average progress, or what's expected, to go up one grade level per year? That's the standard?
Yeah, what we expect and hope for is anywhere between one, one and a half, and two years' growth in one year's time.
Okay, so for example, for the ILET, from 3.6 to 5.1, that is typical expectation?
That is in the range of typical expectation, yes it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But we'd love to see it go up even more. I mean, ultimately, the goal is to continue increasing.
Other questions? Ms. Dominowski?
Going back to slides seven and eight, where you have the tier-three interventions, the Wilson Reading System, that's a tier-three, it's a structure, it's already, it's geared towards tier-three structured literacy based on Orton-Gillingham. But then you have Orton-Gillingham underneath of it. So is, which Orton-Gillingham?
Wilson Reading and Orton-Gillingham are two different programs. Wilson Reading System is a different intervention. So it was written by Barbara Wilson, and it's, it's based on Orton-Gillingham, but it's a different program. And then we also have teachers trained in Orton-Gillingham that are delivering the interventions as well.
But which program? Because Orton-Gillingham is a technique, correct? But which, which, like, which program technique are they using?
Ms. Dominowski, if you're referring to the, which training model are the teachers trained in, Orton-Gillingham is the one intervention. But we know that there's been some level of controversy over the vendor-selected and the method of training. When that contract comes back, that will be accompanied by the data to show you the difference between the performance of students that are experiencing the intervention with teachers that are trained in both types. But in terms of the word recognition tier-three intervention that we have, we have two types, Wilson, as well as Orton- two types, Wilson as well as Orton Gillingham.
Right. But when I Google Wilson Reading System, it's a system, it's a program that I can find, it's a vendor, correct? It's based on Orton Gillingham and other reading techniques. For literacy, I mean, it's geared specifically as a targeted Tier Three, grades two through 12. When you just say Orton Gillingham, it is a technique, and there's several different companies that offer a program based in Orton Gillingham. So there's an Orton Gillingham that, you know, it's what, 12, I think it's 60 hours, or the certification for that is, it's all different. So I'm just curious as to, I guess, not all Orton Gillingham is the same, correct? Or is it, are you saying that it is every Orton Gillingham out there is exactly the same?
The same techniques and strategies, no matter what Orton Gillingham program or Orton Gillingham package you're using. There's no difference.
So why the difference in the certifications? Why would one be 60 hours and one be, I don't know, 12 weeks, or whatever it is, to be certified in Orton Gillingham?
I can't answer that. I'm not sure.
So for us, part of our work with Orton Gillingham is our partnership with our Department of Special Education. And so they sometimes determine who gets what training and what amount of training, and they help to support our teachers who are facilitating that in the ELA classroom. So that really goes more through our special ed office in collaboration with us. So they might be able, but I can definitely take that back and get that information for you.
I just would like to know that we're using an Orton Gillingham program that is geared specifically for Tier Three interventions and not for general education.
Oh, we are. Yes, absolutely, yes. But I could also get that clarification for you.
Okay.
And I can also share with you the intensity of that. Orton Gillingham is being used in small group, and it's being used, the frequency of it is in addition to Core. So students are getting foundation, like they're getting foundation in Core. And then what makes it a Tier Three is that it's a smaller group and it's more frequent. So it's not just the program itself, but how it's delivered, and then also monitoring the progress. Because the ultimate goal is, no matter what program we're using, we want to make sure students are learning to read. And so that's why we're collecting that data and looking at it county-wide, to make sure that students are progressing, and supporting teachers if they need additional support.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McMillian and then Ms. Pumphrey.
Thank you for the presentation, and I must admit that I'm a bit overwhelmed, but I'm trying to learn this in small chunks the way that I learn. The DIBELS piece on Slide Three, was DIBELS at one time a K through three screening process?
Yes. DIBELS was K to three for a while. It's a universal screener, and AMIRA replaced it in grades one through three.
We made the decision this school year?
Yes. So actually, last year, last year, most of the schools used it, one through three.
So we give schools a choice?
This year, we did not because we wanted systematic collection, data collection that was consistent. Because DIBELS is administered by a teacher.
One-on-one?
It's a lot of, right, it's resources, because it takes time to deliver that, to administer that one-to-one to a child, and then there's subjectivity as well.
Okay. And the AMIRA can be administered to a class?
Correct.
And can parents opt out of AMIRA?
Based on the Ready to Read Act, we're required to screen all students, so there isn't an opting out. But parents are very, you know, we communicate with the parents and let them know about the screening process, but the expectation is that all students are screened.
Okay. The expectation is, but can they?
All students are screened.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Pumphrey.
I think my question's fairly simple. On Slide 10, you mentioned the 12 weeks of intervention and that it's not supposed to be forever. What happens if students don't meet that goal? Are we reassessing and coming up with a new plan?
Great question.
Yes. We would go back through that cycle of looking at data, looking at maybe doing another diagnostic, looking and determining if we need to continue, or if it's a different intervention, or if we need to increase the intensity of the intervention.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a few questions. So on Slide 11, with the student growth for 23, 24, and we see that students are moving, which is a good thing. The students who did not move end of year, do we know the root causes as to why they are still two grade levels or more below?
So the assessment helps provide some of that information, and this is one assessment point for students. So we actually use a variety of assessments in coordination with one another. So this provides us with some picture of why a student may not be progressing as expected. But we also look at those formative assessments. We also look at how a student is scoring on some of those end-of-year assessments as well, to really kind of pinpoint why aren't we seeing that growth? And if not, then does it mean that our student may need a different intervention? Or like Dr. Wolf mentioned, maybe they need more intensity with that? Because the goal really is to find out why, why we're not seeing some of that movement.
And are there certain concepts, or, you know, when you break down all the different parts of reading, are there certain areas where our students struggle more? Have you noticed that across the board, or not so much?
It really is just not quite a 50/50, but the split between are students struggling with phonics or with comprehension. And so that's really how the interventions are also divided, to target those two areas. So if we go back to that graphic of that reading rope, really identifying which of those areas that are required for skillful readers, do they need some support? Some students need support in both. And so then we have to target both of those areas, but it just depends student to student.
And then on the next slide, it's Read 180, but it's the blue and gray bars. And so when we see grade 10, it's a significant drop with students, the number of students reading below grade level. So is that, how many, so where, how? I have a lot of questions. I'm trying to just formulate the one. So number one, so it's showing that the interventions that we are implementing are working, number one, which is a great thing. Are there certain interventions that you find are working more, that are working better than others? Because I know it's a lot of different things we are providing students with. Do you find that there's certain ones that are having more success with our students, or that our students are gravitating to a little bit more?
So we have found success with all of our interventions, right? One thing that we've identified is that ILET has been more successful with some of our multilingual learners, because it does have that digital component, and it provides a different level of access for students that they seem to really connect with a little bit more. Beyond that, because schools have the option of which program, and again, using multiple barriers they select, we've been fortunate in being able to see that Read 180 and ILET are both providing the support that students need.
And so then, as we're entering the budget season, and we know that we got to make some cuts, nothing over here should be cut.
Correct. My answer is no.
They need more.
Ms. Dominowski, did you have another question?
Yeah, I just had one quick follow-up. I think we've asked this question before, but how many teachers do in the secondary, do we have certified in Wilson, the reading system?
I don't know that exact number, but we're happy to take that question back to see if we can find more information on the exact number of teachers trained.
Dr. DiDonato, do you have that number? I know, if we could get that soon, I know, I think we've asked it before, and it would be helpful to know how many. If we're saying that we're offering that as an intervention, we should know how many teachers are certified. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Frompong.
So I guess as we talk about the different interventions and the different tiers, are you able to actually determine based on Tier Three? This is kind of similar thing to what Ms. Booker-Dwyer was asking, but I guess I'm asking it specifically for like Tier Three. If we talk about we expect to see one, one-and-a-half, two years' growth, what interventions at Tier Three are we seeing that makes the best gains towards that?
Again, that really is dependent per student. And when we get to Tier Three, some of the students are also receiving other services as well, and so it really is a compound effect. And so it isn't this or that, but really in terms of what does that student need? How many years do they need to grow? Because our students requiring Tier Three intervention are usually at a greater deficit. And so it really, again, a variety of factors. So we are finding success with each of our Tier Three programs, but the rate really is an individual case.
So then when we look back with Slide 10, and you see that example of an intervention, you could have a student that would just have an intervention for 15 weeks, make progress, and then we just kind of cycle back again, working on the next set of goals.
Correct. Yes, the goals are adjusted as progress is made, exactly that.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the report on academic achievement, BCPs progress in action. And for that, I call on Dr. Rogers.
Thank you. I would like to call forward Ms. Leanne Schubert, Mr. Matthew Ames, Ms. Lenny Mode, and Ms. Kristin Ryan. We are very pleased to provide a BCPs progress in action report on early college access for our students. We are spotlighting Catonsville High School this evening, and we're excited to have Matt Ames here with us, along with his English Department Chair, Ms. Mode, and his Science Department Chair, and Avid Site Coordinator, Ms. Ryan. I think Ms. Schubert is going to get us started. Some of this information should look familiar, but our expansion work particularly on bringing access directly to our high schools. Catonsville High School is one of the schools that has brought that forward for the students, and will be able to speak about what impact that is having for students. So Ms. Schubert.
Good evening, and thank you. So I'm going to lay out a basic foundation of what our early college access program looks like, and then our friends from Catonsville can really fill you in on the specifics at that particular school. So early college access has expanded exponentially since 2014, when Senate Bill 740 was passed requiring tuition discounts. You can see on the slide, seven expansions with dual enrollment from on-location courses at CCBC to on-location courses at our BCPs schools, dual credit courses, online courses, our youth apprenticeships, and our career technology training for our students. Next slide, please. Thank you. So you've seen this slide before this evening, and thank you, Dr. DiDonato, for explaining it for me. But as we've discussed, in order to attain CCR status, there are multiple pathways. Our students are either looking, thank you, our students are either looking at proficiency on our Algebra I and English MCAP exams, or looking at their GPA with the A, B, or C in Algebra I. And Ms. Booker-Dwyer, thank you for encouraging our parents for looking at Focus to check their status of their students. So what happens when a student attains CCR? Well, there's many things that become available. Tonight, we're really going to talk about the dual enrollment opportunities with our Community College of Baltimore County partner. Once a BCPs student attains CCR status, in both 11th and 12th grade, they have access to free classes at CCBC. Right now, that looks like two classes in the fall and spring, both junior and senior year, for a total of eight free classes for our students who have CCR status. However, as was alluded to in the previous presentation, we do have some students who do not have CCR status, and they still can access the CCBC classes at a 50% reduced tuition rate. So it's not that we preclude them from accessing those courses, but the free tuition happens when students attain their CCR status. I was about to say next slide, but that's me. Okay, so when students attain that CCR, there's multiple pathways that become available. And you can see the three boxes here on the screen. Once they attain CCR status, not only can they access these classes at CCBC, which would be the middle box, but in the first box, we talk about the college preparatory program. In Baltimore County, we have selected the Maryland Advanced Placement option for our students that becomes available to our students at CCR status. And that Maryland AP option is defined by a student taking at least five AP courses across two different content areas, and at least two of those AP courses need to be in the same content area. And then to fully achieve Maryland AP option, they would need to score three or higher on three of those AP exams, and a score of C or better in their AP courses. Now certainly, our students do access AP courses before the end of 10th grade, when CCR status is attained, but Blueprint requires us to have this option available to students. Of course, they can take the classes at the community college that I spoke about. And then finally, with our CTE programs, and I thank Dr. Elmandor for kind of preparing you for that conversation, the students can take credit and non-credit courses at the community college. We encourage our students to participate in apprenticeships, and we also encourage our students through CTE to earn industry-recognized credentials that are associated with the various CTE programs of study. So one of the options available to our students with CCBC are what we call on-location courses. These are CCBC courses that are offered right in our brick-and-mortar high school buildings. I believe our Catonsville friends are going to talk a little bit more about that. So on-location, CCBC brings the instructor to a school, and those courses are offered right during the day for our BCPs students. So you can see this year, we have 12 high schools offering on-location CCBC courses, which is an increase from nine high schools last year. They range in the number of courses that are being offered at each school. This fall, we have 34 sections being offered at these 12 schools. And right now, in fall of 2024, we have 555 of our BCPs students participating in these on-location courses. We are always looking to expand these opportunities for our students. Clearly, on-location eliminates the transportation challenge that students might face. Last year, the entire school year, we had 628 students participate in both fall semester and spring semester. So we are well on our way to increase those numbers from last year. And then you can see specifically what is being offered at Catonsville High School. This fall, they are offering two sections of College Composition 1 and two sections of History of the United States 2, and they are on track to offer Intro to Psychology in the spring. So besides our on-location courses, we offer the ability for our students to take courses at the Community College of Baltimore County. Right now, in fall of 2024, we have 2,367 courses being taken by our students at CCBC. 652 of those courses are students who are CCR. 595 of those courses are students who are not CCR. This is something we are looking at regularly. And of course, I'll note again that those CCR students are taking those courses completely tuition-free, as well as fee-free, and we pay for their books as well with that CCR status. We know there are a lot of benefits for our students participating in these early college programs. With that increased interest, there's an increase in students earning a degree and overall credits that they take. As I mentioned, those on-location opportunities really mitigate the transportation concerns. But bottom line, as a parent, they're saving money, right? These are college-level courses and credits that students earn at no cost to the student or the parents, and that is huge for our families. And some more data just to support that dual enrollment, and I really want to point out the BCPs data specific here. So 67% of our BCPs E-CAP students, those are students participating in the dual enrollment, have a GPA between 3.0 and 4.0, with the average of our students being a 3.0. So we are seeing our students meet with success when they engage in these opportunities. So at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Principal Ames, so he can highlight the amazing things happening in a Catonsville High School.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So I'm the proud principal of Catonsville High School, and I want to thank everyone for allowing me to do my favorite thing in the world, which is to brag about our school and our students and our faculty and our community. So we are doing great things at Catonsville High School because we have great kids. And so I want to talk about one aspect of that this evening. We are, as Ms. Schubert said, we are one of the schools who has a relationship with CCBC, where we have invited their professors into the building. They are teaching three courses this year. They are teaching three courses this year in our building, one on A days, one on B days, so a total of six sections. And we have always had a great relationship with the community college. Our proximity is ideal, being across the street, but now offering college courses on our own campus opens doors for even more students. I had the pleasure of speaking with some of the students enrolled in the course, just to get some feedback about how it's going. You can see those quotes there that the young people have provided. As Ms. Schubert said, the idea of being more convenient, not having to deal with travel, the idea of getting nine total college credits at the end of this year is pretty impressive for students in their junior year of high school. And then, the other thing is the flexibility that it's providing for our students, because they don't have to change anything about their schedules. They continue to take their regular CHS classes right in the mix with the CCBC course. The real credit in terms of how well this has worked for us, it was brand-new. This is my 10th year at Catonsville, so the first year that we've done it on campus, but it has really worked very smoothly because of the people to my right, and I'd like to just, you know, thank them for their leadership in terms of working with the students. This is new for the students, taking a college course, and then, working with parents and working with the representatives at CCBC. So, I want to introduce Ms. Mode, my English Chair, first.
I'm really enthusiastic about this program, mainly because of the access it's providing to our students. We have 38 students in this program, and half of them have not, until they entered into this program, did not access an Advanced Academics class yet, so they were not in a GT or an AP course. They are thriving right now. Six of our 38 students, at the end of their 10th-grade year, had not met their CCR status yet, and they did not have to have the financial burdens of that. They're retaking things to make that possible, but these are students who, through our EOS data that we were able to obtain in different means, had expressed interest in taking Advanced Academics courses, and whether through confidence or their course projectory, had not had the opportunity to do so yet. So, offering this CCBC at CHS cohort has given them the opportunity to be in a building they're comfortable with, with mentors that they can go to if they're having a challenge, and counselors who can assist them when they're nervous about a deadline or need any other support. And so, we're really seeing just the value of this program, and I'm excited to hopefully continue it, hopefully expand it. As our English Department Chair, I was nervous about what is English Composition 1 going to look like, and this accelerated course looks very similar to our AP Language and Composition course. Our students who were in On Level and Honors 10 entered in, engaged with this curriculum, and are finding that they are discussing high-level rhetoric and analysis and thriving in that environment. So, I'm just so thankful that we've been able to offer this at CHS for these 38 students.
Just to talk a little bit about how we chose some of these students, we started off by recruiting through our Avid 10th-grade classes, being that one of the goals of Avid is to create college and career-ready students. We thought that would be a good place to start. So, last year, we went to their classes with a presentation of what they could expect through enrolling in the CCBC at CHS program. With that, about a little over half of the students are co-enrolled in Avid 11 and the CCBC course, which means they have this Avid 11 elective during the school day that provides them with this additional level of support. Through that, they get to conduct tutorial lessons amongst small groups. They get to have a peer group that they are in the same situation, that they can rely on for study sessions. And then, like Ms. Mode said, they have the comfort of being in our building with either their Avid teachers, or with our counselors, or with mentors that they're used to, to kind of check in with and, you know, go to for when they're struggling. We also noticed that a, we had a large number of students that got waitlisted for enrollment. I believe it was 50 students were waitlisted, and so, because we were kind of promoting, like, okay, you can get into this, and then also co-enroll in Avid, our Avid numbers went up because a lot of those waitlisted students remained in the Avid class. So, now even more students are getting that additional support. And then, from the quote from our Avid 11 teacher, Ms. Eber, she is excited by the fact that she has these students who are currently in a college class mixing with those students who aren't quite there yet, and it's just really had a positive effect overall, that other students are engaging in this academic conversation of what it's like to be in a college course and what they can expect. So, it's positive on both of our programs.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for sharing, and we'll start with Ms. Lichter.
So, thank you for that presentation. I've always been very proud of our early college access and the work that staff has done to really build it, and it's great to hear what's happening in one school. My question is on Slide 6, and I think this is for Ms. Schubert. You know, there's 12 high schools. How, but we're missing, I think, 13 of them. So, how are schools selected? Is the barrier is getting the instructors? What is limiting us to have it in more schools?
So, I actually have a meeting with our CCBC team right after the Thanksgiving break to start talking about next year. Yes, to all of those challenges. We are looking to expand our on-location opportunities for our students because we know, you know, as Catonsville shared with you, it's right there, it's built into their day. So, it's partnering with our schools to identify and understand their needs, and then partnering with CCBC. And yes, they have shared that at times, there are challenges getting those instructors to come on campus, but it is our intent to work to continue to expand.
That's great, and I think the benefit of having students who aren't the typical students that you would have thought of to have in the program, and the benefits that you're seeing, and the, not the pressure, but just being in that type of an environment just seems to make all the difference. So, kudos for having students that may not have fit the picture originally as part of the program. So, thanks for all you're doing.
Ms. DeLuski.
Thank you, and just a follow-up question to Ms. Lichter. For students who don't attend one of the 12 high schools, but if their schedule allows, especially if they're a senior with a shortened day, are they allowed to attend a CCBC course at a neighboring school that may be more convenient than actually traveling to CCBC? Thank you.
I'd have to check if that is available. I'm looking at the superintendent, because she seems to have an answer.
Well, we have not yet engaged in that practice. It's something we could look at. Ms. Lichter was correct in saying, you know, half of the schools don't have the programs yet, but we want to highlight for everyone that we moved from nine schools to 12 schools this year, and last year, where over both semesters, we had a total of 600 students enrolled just for first semester. We have 555 students enrolled, and so, we expect to double that number and to continue to expand to other schools. Just last week, when we met with Dr. Curt Nytis and members of her team, one of the challenges that they shared with us, our professors typically work Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Now, there's a new Monday, Wednesday schedule, or a Tuesday, Thursday schedule. The commitment that they typically make to us is not a 50-minute commitment, and because of the amount of days and times, it's requiring a block that goes, the way they shared it, it goes not only across the calendar in terms of how semesters are, to match up with ours as well as across time, so it blocks them out. It doesn't match up very nicely to campus, and so, she is committed to continuing to help us recruit people who are willing to really make that sacrifice on behalf of the students that we have in our buildings.
So, I have a few questions. This is, you know, this, I love this, and I think every child should be duly enrolled and should have that opportunity to get a CTE credential, an associate's degree, and their diploma. For the students who are CCR eligible, and they're not able, and they don't have the courses offered at their high schools, and they're not at one of these 12 high schools, are transportation vouchers or anything done to perhaps help the student get transported to CCBC's campus to take a course? Are there any options for that?
I'll answer. Ms. Schubert doesn't want to say no for transportation. However, one of the things that Dr. Curt Nytis talked about is the number of online opportunities that are available for students. Students can access CCBC courses in a variety of ways, during the day, during the evening, when it might be more inconvenient, weekends, as well as the online format. You know, one of the things that I know she was asking us to be cognizant of is our schedules, matching up our schedules, and so, some of that work has been done in our high schools, but it's also when the students begin, students beginning the college schedule in August, and, you know, that's important to get them started right on time, so they don't begin behind, particularly when they're taking, they're accessing a rigorous course.
And is there opportunity for BCPs teachers to teach CCBC courses?
Yes, absolutely, and we partner with CCBC and work to recruit our teachers when possible.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Ms. Frimpong.
Not really a question, just more of a comment. Again, because I was looking at some of the requirements, and when you think about a college prep program, an AP having to take at least five AP courses, that's a really heavy load, and it's not always guaranteed that when you take the AP exam, that the college is going to accept that. So, the idea of an early college or dual enrollment, I think, is fantastic. I'm aware of students who have gone through this program, and they've gone to college credit-wise as a junior, their very first year, and so, they were able to graduate in two years instead of four years, and then, continue on towards masters and other paths in their life. But it's really a wonderful program, so kudos to you guys.
Thank you. So, another BCPs in action report. Let's give a round of applause. Thank you so much. This is, it's always good to hear good news. The next item on the agenda is information, which is the FY 2025 General Fund Report and Revenue, Expenditures, and Incumbrances, Budget, and Actual for the period ending September 2024. The next item on the agenda is Board Committee Updates and Agenda Settings, and we'll start with committee updates. And the first update is the Audit Committee. And on November 12th, we had an audit committee meeting, and reports were shared on Kelly Services payment, school activity fund accounting, and the employee hearing appeals process. Each report shared results, potential risks, recommendations, and corrective actions. During the meeting, two committee members expressed concern that the sample size was not included in the report for the employee hearing appeals process. And this is an important data point, because knowing the sample size directly impacts their reliability and the extent to which we can generalize those findings across the school system. It was requested that this report be modified to include the sample size, and the response from the Office of Internal Audit was, "We will consider it," and that it is typically not included in reports. I am deeply concerned with this response, and I expressed this during the Audit Committee meeting, because we aspire, as a school system, to hold ourselves to the highest standards. And including a sample size and ensuring that it is the right-sized sample, this is the lowest bar to achieve to support reliability of findings. We had robust discussion about sample size in the Office of Internal Audit. They fully answered our questions. The concern is, is that the report is posted in isolation of this discussion. So, if you don't watch the committee meeting, then you won't know the sample size, and therefore, there could be questions about the reliability and the validity of this report. As a board, we need to be clear about what information we want to see in an audit report to ensure reliability and validity of findings, and how we use these findings to inform governance decisions. The Office of Internal Audit and the Audit Committee, these are two of the most powerful resources we have to independently and objectively assess the school system and identify areas of improvement. So, I'm not making a motion yet, but I am requesting that the Policy Review Committee in the next round of policy reviews prioritize the review of Policies 8400, 8410, and 8430. Our next committee update is Building and Contracts with Mr. Young.
The next Building and Contract Committee meeting will be Monday, December 2nd, at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Ms. Lichter, Curriculum Committee.
We did have our meeting last week, and there was three agenda items at that meeting. One was the Elementary Computer Science and Innovation Books. We have 30 schools who have that course, and actually, the books are currently on display in this building, in the lobby, right outside of the atrium for the public to be able to look at. We also had an update on math instruction, which focused on reviewing MCAP data by grade and by student group. Math interventions were discussed, new initiatives, long-range planning that the office is doing, and also how our families can get involved in, more in math instruction. And our third agenda item was an update on the secondary ELA pilot, which is my perspectives right now. The PD for teachers was reviewed, elements in the curriculum, as well as feedback from teachers for Quarter 1. They also discussed next steps with us, and a recommendation should be coming to the board in spring of 2025. And is that the type of summary that you were looking for? I was just going to try it out. Okay. All right. So, and our next meeting is, I forgot to look at that part. Our next meeting is in a couple weeks, in December. Can't do everything.
Thank you. Equity Committee, Ms. Frimpong.
Okay, so, the Equity Committee, we met Thursday, November 7th. We had three different agenda items. We actually only got through two, just because of all the discussion that we had. So, the first one was community partnerships, and we had guests, Mr. Bazemore, we had Ms. Han and Ms. Harden, and they talked about how it is that we're partnering with external entities, just in an effort to make sure that we have our students who are in the school system seeing people that look like them in different roles. One of the other things that was talked about was if there is an opportunity for someone to come in to the system, and how would they get an adjunct teacher license? And so, it's yet another way to allow professionals and skilled people to come in front of our students and teach them, where we may not normally have some of that available directly within the system. So, just talking more about partnerships. And then, we talked about stay-focus groups. So, this was different for us, because the main topic was about retention. And so, the idea with the stay-focus groups is, what is it that we're doing right? We've heard about exit interviews and people leaving and saying, "Oh, I don't like this," or "I don't like that," but what about, what is causing people to stay in the system? And so, there was a variety of questions that were asked in the study, in a focus group, and the information from there was taken, and there's going to be some recommendations and paths forward based on the information from that study. So, we do meet on the 21st with our Equity Advisory Council. We will have a shortened meeting, because there is a community conversation, so we will only meet for a half hour, but the next Equity Committee meeting will be Thursday, January 16th. So, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Frimpong. You got an A on the assignment as well. The next committee is Legislative Committee, and on November 6th, we had our kickoff to the Legislative Committee. the Legislative Committee meetings. And whenever we start the Legislative Committee meetings, we start with just the foundational knowledge, understanding the purpose and function of the committee, measures of effectiveness. We present all of the proposed agenda topics and give committee members the opportunity to weigh in on those topics. And most of the topics really just consist of us reviewing bills as they are presented. We begin to think about our legislative priorities, and we're kind of waiting on May to get their final legislative priorities, so that we're not duplicating efforts, and we're looking forward also to seeing Tabco's legislative priorities as well. And our next meeting is not until January, and in that meeting, we will begin to review the prefiled bills, and we will also begin to tighten up our legislative priorities. And our last committee update, Policy Review Committee, Ms. Pumphrey.
On November 11th, we met, and we discussed five policies. Four of the policies, 3113, supplements, 3121, funds management and classification of expenditures, 3123, financial reporting, and 3125, school activity funds. Staff recommended only minor changes, and all four of those policies did move forward to first reader, so the board will see those coming up soon. For Policy 0100, which is our equity policy, we did have a robust discussion about some recommended language changes from the committee, and decided to return, or yes, decided to return that policy to the Equity Committee for further review based upon the recommendations, recommended changes from PRC. Fortunately, we do have a member of our Equity Committee also on PRC, so we were able to get information from her, as far as her opinion, as far as, do they have enough information from us, from PRC to evaluate the changes? And it seems like that will be fine, so that will come back to us after the Equity Committee review. And our next PRC meeting is December 9th at 4:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Items. Board members, please raise your hand to indicate if you have any items for consideration. Okay, the last item on the agenda is announcements. The board's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Wishing you all a happy holidays. Thank you for joining us tonight. Have a great evening. The meeting is now adjourned.[1767.13]